The discussion on the periodic update to the comprehensive plan. Terrell, welcome.
Thank you very much. We're really excited to be here today to talk about this topic. It's something we've been preparing for, for quite a while. So I'm Terrell Black. I work for the city in planning and economic development. Also here is Spencer Gardner, Planning Director, Marne Murphy, who's our lead on the climate part of this project, and Kevin Freibot's also here to talk about any housing or population questions you might have on the statistics. And really, our whole department will be working on this project in some capacity and already on some projects. So this is a big work item. We also have some support, although they're not here today, but I think she's listening in online, is Melissa Alafatouli from Washington Commerce, who is the Spokane County Rep for Growth Management Services. So we do have also agency support to help us through this project. You also had Dave Anderson come this spring. He's the Head of Growth Management Services. He gave you kind of a high-level overview of GMA and periodic updates and comprehensive plans. So with that, I just wanted to also mention again some of the things that Dave talked about, the growth management planning in Washington State. We do have the GMA, which is the Growth Management Act, often referred to just like that, the GMA. It lays out what comprehensive plans should go over, what required elements every city and county in the state has. It also talks about our land use plan and our land use plan map. Land use decisions, of course, have long-term effects, and also infrastructure has long lead times and long payback periods for cities and counties. We are on the 2026 timeline, so the state of Washington designates each county a time that they need to come back and look at their comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plans can be amended annually, annual amendments. Kevin Freibot here and Brandon Whitmarsh are working on the ones we have this year. So those are typically private applications, but also sometimes the city has minor amendments to the comprehensive plan. The periodic update is when we're required to make sure that we're in conformance with all changes in state law in our comprehensive plan and our policy document and also in our development code. As I just mentioned, we have sort of two types of amendments to the comprehensive plan, what we call annual amendments, and then this is the periodic update. It is due in 2026. The last time we did one was in 2017. We used the tagline "Shaping Spokane" for the title of that. This one that we are moving forward with, we've given the title through Plan Spokane 2046. That's the horizon we're looking at is 2026 to 2046. A new to state law is a five-year check-in, so we will be required in 2031, along with the county and other cities in the area to look at our climate goals and our housing goals and see how we're doing. If the population were suddenly to surge, then we would all be doing a look again at our comprehensive plans potentially. And then the next periodic update would be in 2036. So comp plans have a 20-year time period that you look at, and they are redone every 10 years. There are some new legislation that I know council's well aware of around climate and housing particularly. There are other, of course, minor amendments and some around transportation and climate as well. But those are the two real driving forces for change in this periodic update and making it a little more significant for the city of Spokane and other cities and counties across the state to come into conformance with new state guidance. We already have a lot of projects underway that are informing our periodic update work. We did a Housing Action Plan in 2021. The Parks Department has done a Parks and Natural Lands Master Plan in 2022. We've been doing projects around transit-oriented development, which is what TOD stands for. We've done building opportunity through housing policy work, so we've already proactively addressed a lot of the housing changes that have been mandated. So we're ahead in some of that policy work. We're also, I believe, on the 28th, you'll also be recognizing through resolution, the Centers and Corridors Study. That's going to give us some more information to move forward with our land use plan map and look at our land use, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a second. We're also working on the land capacity analysis. So three of you are on the Steering Committee of Elected Officials, so you're aware of that regional work. That's where we look at our vacant and underutilized lands and with our population and our expected housing unit number in the future to see if we have enough capacity to meet that. We are not yet done with that. We should be done with that by the end of this year. We're also working on county-wide planning policies, again, through the Steering Committee of Elected Officials. The city of Spokane has three members on that group, and the county-wide planning policies are sort of a higher-level document for all the comp plans in the county to come into conformance with. So city Spokane's comp plan doesn't need to be in conformance with the county's comp plan, but everyone needs to be in conformance with the county-wide planning policies. With climate being a new element, it was also separately funded by the state legislature. So we've already begun our climate work and our climate planning. We are really underway with our consultants. We expect to be more out in the public with that early in the year. And so our comp plan update and our climate planning will be coming together in 2025 because the climate planning work is to inform the comp plan. I was looking at my timeline this morning, already slipping a little bit, but add a month on to everything. So at the end of this month, as I mentioned, on the 28th before you, will be the contract with our consultant. So we expect to be underway with them on that. The consultant's primary assistance to us is going to be through the environmental impact statement, so the environmental review that is mandated for this project. I'm going to talk a little bit more about SEPA, but that's really going to help us understand how we're going to engage and deliver information to the public along the way as we work through that process. We did do one also for the South Logan TOD, so that's the most recent EIS work that we've gone through. Final adoption is statutory now June 30th, 2026. The 2024 and 2025 communities in the state of Washington prevailed on the legislature to move the deadline to December. We have also added that to the legislative list, and hopefully that occurs, and I know other cities are also, and the county are also hoping to have that to be December. Gives us more time to adopt the large document. We've been using this slide just to show that we're, the climate element is an additional element to the comprehensive plan. We've decided to approach that rather than add a 15th chapter to the comprehensive plan. We would like to integrate it into the existing chapters. So the existing chapters are on the outside of this circle, and so that's our goal. We will still need to have some kind of matrix showing that we're meeting all the required climate components, but they really revolve around land use, transportation, capital facilities, and utilities. So it makes sense to put those into the existing policies and elements that we have. We're, of course, looking for ways to simplify the plan. I have some quick slides at the end, but it is a complicated, big document. I don't think I've done a full page count, but long, as I mentioned, 14 chapters. We have quite a few appendices as well. So we're trying to simplify it. We have some outdated and unnecessary appendices, which we will plan to remove. We'll also be adding some new ones that we need to add. We're wanting to, of course, make it more online as possible. We used to, when I started at the city in 2007, everybody had a big printout of the comp plan. That's something we haven't done for a long time because it's so large and it's just not efficient. So it really, it really does live as an online document. We've talked about some fun ideas we haven't been able to add in quite yet, but maybe we can do local artists or have a local photographer add some of the illustrations as we get to the end. We know this is going to take a lot of time for our boards and commissions and staff as well, so we're just trying to be most efficient with our outreach as we move into that in 2025. Community outreach, we have already started, again, with climate planning, the Public Participation Plan. We tried to mirror the climate planning one that we also adopted. Really, they will merge together as projects. The climate planning also included funding for a tribal consultant, so we've begun work with the tribes more through climate than we have in the past, so we hope to carry that through also with our comprehensive planning. And of course, climate planning also has an emphasis on reaching underserved or underrepresented communities that maybe haven't been as engaged in planning in the past as they should be. Our first real item is to work on scoping the EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement. And when we get through that on a staff and boards and commissions level, then we'll be going out to the public with that, and that, I anticipate, will be early in 2025. And once we have scoping, we'll talk, we'll have a draft EIS. So again, I have some slides coming up here that I can talk through that process a little bit more. We'll be doing alternative analysis, which is alternatives to growth, alternatives. Right now, we have the Centers and Corridors Mixed-Use Growth Strategy. I'm going to talk about what we looked at in 2000 and which one we picked. But the choice of which growth alternative is going to be really important as we move through the process. So the last time we did SEPA, I've got the shot there, it was for a timeline of 2000 to 2020. And that's what we still used in the 2017 periodic update with an addendum to this, but we feel that it's really time that we go through the EIS process and come up with 2046 all the way. When we, after we, when we're scoping the EIS, we're identifying what topics that we want to look at through the EIS. It is required to have public notice and a comment period on your scoping, so that will be the first part of the EIS process. After that, you come up with alternatives. Our consultants recommending and sort of best practice for EIS is as you start with three, you need to come up with your existing conditions. So what we have right now today, look at that, and then at least two alternatives. We may come up with additional alternatives through the draft review process. So you could come up with a little bit of your second, a little bit of your third, you know, some of the first. You can, you can come up with other alternatives as you move through the process. When we get to the preferred alternative, we are going to come and ask Plan Commission and Council to help identify the preferred alternative, because once a preferred alternative is selected, your final EIS is prepared to that preferred alternative, and the final comp plan document will also reflect the preferred alternative. So that is an important step in the process. So I just took some quick shots with my phone of one of the old printouts from 2000. We still have a few in the office. These were actually mailed out, and this was kind of the draft EIS document that was used at the time. It has information on each of the elements, but it also looked at the growth alternative. So the existing conditions at the time were one of them. They also used central city, so focusing more on the downtown was one of the considered growth alternatives. And the third growth alternative was Centers and Corridors Mixed-Use Areas, so focusing growth. So that is the one that was selected, and that is what we have, still have predominantly in our land use plan map. It's not unique to Spokane. A lot of cities in the state of Washington use a similar approach. And some of the Centers and Corridors that people know well, like Perry, Monroe, some areas, especially where the cities made some investment, are some of our very successful So as I mentioned, SEPA, I just want to throw out that ecology has quite a bit of SEPA information, so anybody who wants to dive deep, they have handbooks and a lot of information that walks you through the various ways to use SEPA. So this would be considered a non-project SEPA action because it's a planning-level document. Also wanted to just kind of talk about who decides what the plan says. Of course, the community will be consulted along the way. We also have a lot of agency partners, too, that are very interested in this work as we move forward. So we'll be working, of course, with agencies. As I mentioned, Commerce provides a lot of guidance to communities about the periodic update. We have like almost 50 pages of checklist from Commerce to make sure that we are meeting the updated policy needs and the updated development code changes that we need to make as part of this process. One of our first deliverables is to provide Commerce the checklist filled out identifying what deficiencies we might have and what we'll be looking at in the process. And then at the end, that's our final deliverable. Back to Commerce is our completed checklist showing how we've met all the mandated changes. That doesn't mean we can't do other changes that the community wants to do or the city wants to do, but we do have a very structured list of items from Commerce that we need to address. The Plan Commission, of course, is going to be kept quite busy in 2025 with workshops going into the details of all the work. And as you know, also, you will hopefully have more steady sessions from us on this. So we will be keeping you apprised of the work as we move forward. I wanted to just touch a little bit, too, about what we're planning to. So as I mentioned, it's a 20-year plan. Doesn't mean the city doesn't look beyond 20 years. In our water planning, certainly, we look a lot further, but the sort of timeframe of 20 years, I think, is kind of important to keep in mind because that's what you're trying to imagine, that you can look forward in your facilities and funding. So it's kind of nice you've got the CIP after this. So you know, that's technically part of the comp plan when you're trying to fund to six years, but you also look ahead 20 years. So we have so far adopted population allocation. So when I say "we" in this instance, I'm talking about the county. The Board of County Commissioners is the one who adopts the population allocation. The city of Spokane population by 2046 is expected to be, we'll just say 260,000 around numbers, but it's actually very specific, 256,057 is what we have projected. We're also still working on the housing allocation. So this is a new requirement from the state legislature that we look at housing units given our population, and we break that into income bands. These numbers are far from final. There's still a lot of work at the Steering Committee to identify what the housing numbers are going to be, and there's some discussion about looking at the land capacity analysis for each community, too, before we move forward and before the Steering Committee recommends adoption to the Board of County Commissioners on the housing allocations. But those, we're also working on at a regional level. So right now, we're finalizing the contract both to accept the Commerce grant money. It's a legislative appropriation of 325,000. It's broken into two contracts because of the state's budget. So we'll get our first half this year and our second half next year. We are also under contract, just working on getting the contract in place with our consultant. It is the same consultant that we're using for climate planning, so I think that will help us integrate. I promised quick run-through of the whole comp plan, but these are just little screenshots from the webpage of all the chapters. We even have a glossary. We have a lot of appendices, so as I said, some can be removed. We also have gone through as staff and identified high-change chapters, moderate and low. We're hoping that the low and maybe some of the moderate, we can just do staff-level changes and have those available for review and really focus our community outreach and our effort with our boards and commissions on the high and moderate change chapters. As I mentioned, lots of appendix as well, so having to go through that and just as part of our project scoping and look at what we have, what we can take out, what we can simplify, what, some of it's frankly just dated and needs to be kind of archived. So we'll have some new appendices out of this work that we can add on. There's also a lot of supporting material that we may be able to uncouple the EIS that was originally put into the appendix and move that out and move some of the shoreline material, things like that, just again, to try to simplify the document. As I mentioned, we do have some new things we have to add. These are the housing element. We have to show, at least in a table, how we're meeting some of those different housing units that we expect through different income bands. We will be doing a racially disparate impacts report. That's a new requirement to the housing chapter element. And we also, as I mentioned earlier, we have a new implementation reporting requirement in 2031. So we are, at this time, going to be lining out, and we are supposed to line that out of what we're going to report on, just so that will be clear in 2031. Commerce has not yet written the WAC or the rules for that, so just we'll be waiting for that. But we do have some ideas about what will be required. We're also trying to have some fun as we slog through this really big document and all the work involved. We have got a little mascot. I gave you guys some stickers. We have our logo, so try to have some fun as we work through the planning. Plan Commission, as I mentioned, is ready and willing, and they're going to have lots of workshops on lots of these topics and help lighten the load for everybody. This was kind of for Plan Commission, but thought for anyone else that's interested as well. There is a lot of online information from Washington Commerce about periodic updates, what's required. A lot of it's, you know, specifically A lot of it's, you know, specific to planners, but it's all public information available. So, if you're particularly interested in transportation or housing or utilities, there are webinars on all of these topics that are available to review. And we are also, you know, encouraging people to email us to planspokane@spokanecity.org so we can get names on the email list and, and keep people informed throughout the process. So, and also, all the people on the climate list, we're also going to be including in this project as well because they're going to merge together. So, just on your Monday meeting, I was here for advanced agenda on Monday, but on the 28th, you're going to be, as I mentioned, accepting the Commerce grant. The contract with BERC is on your agenda and also resolution initiating the project and also adopting the public participation plan. So, that's it. Any, any questions for me or anybody else here on the team?
That's a lot to unpack, too, in that short amount of time. Any, I'm sure you'll be hearing from us because I think there's some questions we need more clarity on, but any questions from Council at this time? Councilmember Klitschke?
Got some feedback. Was Spoh Plan ever a consideration?
Spoh Plan? Must have been in the Council Office, but I don't think we had that one in place. I did want to mention, too, I did compel upon Jacoby to get us on the January first study session. So, at that time, we should have more actual information about what the alternatives are, and this will be in scoping, we hope, then. So, we'll have more information for you to, I think, respond to.
I did have a note to myself about neighborhood plans. I know not every neighborhood has a plan. They're not being updated. So, when you speak to neighborhood plans, really, what are you speaking to? The ones that was generated by them or some other document?
We, we have the ones that were generated through the, mostly the 2007 neighborhood planning money that was allocated. So, those are included for reference. They tend to look at different topics. But yeah, they're in there. And then, some of the, one of the old appendices is just a lot of the, the 2007 documents about neighborhood planning, which may be kind of outdated at this time. So, we do need to kind of look through and make a decision about those. But we don't have to do that immediately, obviously.
I think that would be important because that's, some significant changes have happened in neighborhoods since those original plans. And again, every neighborhood didn't have a plan or did not come out with a plan. So, I don't know how you will incorporate that, that data or lack thereof into this new plan as you're producing. So, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Terrell.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jessica Stradens is going to come up and review the draft CIP program, the SIP.
I really like how you package this up, Jacoby.
Just getting it all in there.
Okay. So, you just heard from Terrell. That is the high-level plan, right? And so, the CIP is the shorter-term plan. So, that's what we're talking about. So, today, I'm going to walk you through the 2025 through 2030 citywide CIP. This gets developed as part of the biennial budget process every year. It'll continue every year because we need to update our CIP every year. So, I'm going to give you an overview of the CIP itself, for those of you who are maybe not familiar or just plumb forgot because it's dense material. Department summary, funding summary, unfunded projects I'll briefly touch on, and then just the next steps. So, the city's comprehensive plan, as required by the state's Growth Management Act, is the guiding doc for the annual development of the six-year CIP. The comp plan houses the capital facilities plan in Appendix C, which is amended every year when Council adopts the six-year CIP. The CIP is ultimately the shorter-term tool used to realize these higher-level plans. So, what is in it? So, the CIP describes and prioritizes capital projects or items, provides information on the funding sources, the status of the funding, and the years associated with the project or item. Again, required by the state, therefore, it's included in our SMC. It is a six-year plan and is updated annually conforming to those comp plan requirements. It is adopted as part of the budget process where the first two years of the CIP is, in fact, incorporated into the biennial budget. So, it is our implementation tool. Okay. So, what exactly is in there? Well, it's, in order for a project or an item to be included in the CIP, it must be a tangible asset or lead to one, such as studies do, have a useful life of at least five years, be cost more than $60,000 or more, and be found in either the transportation or the capital and facilities and utilities chapters of the comp plan. So, I'm very interested in what Terrell just had to say because that was high degree of manipulation is what they just highlighted for me. Better figure out what that means. What are they doing?
They have left the room.
Yeah, I know. Of course. No. Okay. So, we know why we make a CIP. We generally know what's in there, at least from a strategic or conceptual way. So, taking a step back, let's talk about how the CIP is developed. So, please understand that there are two CIPs that are adopted by Council every year. The Streets CIP is administered by ICM Department, so you see Kevin Pacanso a lot. And it is developed between February and June because it's attempting to comply with the state's fiscal year. The citywide CIP is facilitated by the Budget Office. It is developed between March and August and incorporates the CIP. So, it just gets folded in. For the citywide, we use budget, we see the budget development begin in March, and I want to point out that I actually counted, there are 58 employees who have direct access to the capital budget that get to manipulate it when we're under development. So, once you factor in their leadership and perhaps vendors that they're reaching out for, for quotes, I mean, the number was likely over 100 people that are involved with this development every year. I released a preliminary CIP report to the city on May 24th. You see up there is the third bullet point. It gives a sneak peek into the program, the new projects, the capacity-changing projects that ultimately get brought forward to Plan Commission, and visibility into unfunded projects. After another round of changes, because we do have a round one, round two, because there is a lot of people involved, then it gets bound into a book, and it's called the Draft CIP, and then it's released to the public. And we did that on August 29th this year. It's earlier than the operating budget because we do have an inter-agency comment period of at least 30 days. So, Kevin Freibot, my cohort in planning, he actually does the SEPA. He gets the not, the termination of nonsignificance. He does all the things. And then, from there, the Plan Commission takes it over, and it reviews the capacity-changing projects in a consistency workshop. It does its own public hearing. And then, at the conclusion of all that, they recommend that the city council adopt the CIP via their findings of fact. And then, through all of these dates, it's October 24th, I'm here in front of you to give you a study session update. Previously, this used to happen at a committee, but it was just too much. It would capitalize the agenda, so that's why it's turned into a study session issue. And then, the first reading of the CIP ordinance will be on Monday. And then, Council will hold its own public hearing on November 4th, and then, right after that, there will be a vote for CIP adoption. So, it takes a very long time. Okay. So, this, a next slide shows the evolution of the six-year CIP cost. And here, we can see the direct impact of the inflationary pressures on the capital budget in particular. In five years, you'll see the cost of the program has more than doubled, even though the count of projects or items have been relatively the same. So, that is the, the city government and how it's impacted by inflationary pressures. Okay. So, this slide shows the proportion of the CIP that belongs to the specific departments that have put in a project or an item. And it appears, as I would expect, I think all of us expect this, with the Public Works Division making up about 80% of the program. The little asterisk next to "other" is broken out in the next slide. So, this is every department that has a project or item budgeted in the CIP by the cost per year. You'll also see approximate funding percentages. Funding is approximate at both the budget line item level when someone inputs a cost and at the project level. As you can imagine, it is very difficult to ascertain the level of funding six years away from now. For instance, oftentimes, grants are identified years in advance, but receiving an actual award is unknown usually at the time of budget development. So, funding, let's talk more about that. So, funding usually only comes from a handful of places, not just for the capital budget, but for the operating budget. So, it's usually current revenue, reserves or fund balance, grants or contributions, and debt. So, that's usually what we see again and again everywhere, but also in the CIP, of course. And then, the status of that funding that is identified could either be funded, meaning it's really likely it's going to happen, maybe we already have an award letter in hand. Partial, meaning only parts of the funding mix are likely to happen, others less so, especially if it's a project that's going to take the full six years. And then, or unfunded, meaning most of the funding mix is unlikely, at least at the time that the budget was developed. As you can imagine, the status of funding can change quickly and frequently. So, this is why we will continue to update this annually. This next slide shows per year identified funding by source. So, fund balance is ranked number one because, again, 80% of the CIP is for the Public Works Division, and they rely on their utility rate revenues for capital improvements. They usually don't know when they're going to do improvements, or their improvements are so large, it takes years. So, that's why it's fund balance and not necessarily revenue. Grants is ranked number two, mostly because of streets, where they often employ fund brading, where they provide a little bit of local money to match for a state grant that then matches for the federal grant. And they use this again and again to complete their projects. The general fund source is basically for police and fire. It's important to note here that this table reflects identified funding sources. It does not indicate if those sources are actually available. For instance, the bottom line shows the Parks Levy, and that is the one that's up in the air as it's required to be passed before any of the projects tagged to it can be completed. So, let's talk about unfunded projects. 30% of capital projects or items identified in the CIP are unfunded. And of those, 36% are supported by the general fund, especially police and fire. The CIP budget book itself clearly identifies what is funded and unfunded, but some examples are listed here. So, one, for instance, is our facilities team has identified the Cannon Street building needs a roof replaced. Almost all the HVAC controls in our city-owned properties need to be redone. Fire, I believe it was last year, they brought in a consultant who identified, yes, they have at least $20 million in unfunded capital needs for stations, equipment, apparatus. Citywide ERP system, that's near and dear to my heart. The city, specifically for fiscal reasons, hasn't been able to employ an ERP. What that does is it takes all of our disparate financial systems and it puts it into one. We are probably decades behind on that, both from the private sector and for some, some of our public sector friends. And then, of course, paving unpaid roads. Okay. So, the CIP draft has been public since August 29th. It is available on the Budget's external website. I have counted the pages because it's far less than the comp plan, but it's 634 pages with approximately 470 projects slash items. When you look at a project page, this is an example of a project page in the book, you will see the description, you will see why it's necessary, you will see how it satisfies the comp plan, and of course, the proposed funding and spending per year. Okay. So, the first reading again is this Monday. Public hearing and the final reading will be on November 4th. So, as a reminder, the Budget Office only facilitates this annual process. There's a lot of people standing behind me right now. You just can't see them. If you have specific projects, because I am not the subject matter expert on 470 projects, you can ask these fine employees. Any questions?
Councilmember Klitschke?
In the SIP, in that explanation of how it meets the comprehensive plan, is that where it tells us whether we're meeting levels of service, or is that a separate concurrency review?
Right. So, the capital facilities plan, which is Appendix C of the comp plan, is where the service levels are outlined. And that is when a CIP project is identified, it's that department trying to meet those levels of service. At no time is there a report that says, "We're not meeting the service, and this is why we need this thing."
Okay. Any other questions for Jessica? Again, Jessica, thank you a lot to unpack. How many pages? 600 and?
34.
34. Okay. Make a note, that'll be a question. All right. Thank you. I'm sure, please reach out to Jessica if you have more questions.
Yes, thank you.
That being completed, we are adjourned from our briefing, and we will see you next Monday afternoon. Thank you.